These are just a few of the allegations. In our bylaws, character is a very frequent criterion. A character has many meanings, including physical as well as moral qualities. Bylaws can be read to mean both of those. My questions are, did the select board do any due diligence and research in character, profitability, and recognition of Carvana? If so, does this mean that the select board condones these characteristics when they voted to endorse the project or the planning board? And are Southwick officials actively seeking additional less than stellar businesses to come in to be reasonably comparable in character to this company?
Hi, I'm Karen Bailey, and I have a question. Your question is for the water administration, with this quarrying and staying 8,000 gallons a day. But it's my understanding that the water commissioner has denied this. So what is there at now and whatever can we take against it? Cannot we have them forward? That is my question. Because I don't think it's fair that we have a water ban and we won't be able to water the town, water our lots. We get the water, we have these cars. I don't think it's fair. So what's your take on it?
I will answer you all too. So go to work.
Good evening, in double town, right, 45, Tarrant Road. And first, I want to applaud you for your services to our town. But I also have a concern, as the town electives, have you really done your due diligence in regards to looking at supporting this special project? My concern is we, people, is that the evidence that's been fed to our community has been fed to us by Carvana. And I'm requesting that you do your due diligence and request an independent test on not only traffic, but water and lighting, and have this done independently so that we can make a decision based on evidence and not solely by what we've been told. Thank you.
Good evening, Marissa Cook, open on 1 to 6 Southwood and M Street. At the informal meeting of citizens in the land use room on June 16th, Mr. Moplin stated unofficially that the estimated tax revenue of the facility will be approximately $900,000 annually. Were any financial projections done to determine the incremental costs of the town for things such as official wear and tear on roads, increased police traffic patrols, sewer and water upgrade needs that were revealed by this project, and other stress on the town's infrastructure? If so, did this analysis reflect a surplus or a deficit in the tax revenues? If this has been done, are those projections part of the record? If no projections were done, what is the reason for not doing this? Is the select board aware of any other parties interested in moving into either of the two industrial restricted zones in Southwick at this time or in the next two years? If so, are there potential businesses and potential uses being proposed? Is the select board or any other board commission, including the Economic Development Commission, actively soliciting any other potential occupants for either of the two industrial restricted zones in Southwick at this time, or have plans to reach out to any businesses in the next two years? If so, what are the potential business, potential uses being solicited?
Hi, I'm Karen Bailey, and I have two questions. As a Commonwealth of Massachusetts, has offered incentives, special funding, or aid packages of any type to the town relative to improving permits and allowing Carvana to build their projects here? If so, what are those? And second question, has the town sought, proposed, applied for, or qualified for any incentives, special funding, or lending terms, or any other aid packages of any type from any department of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, directly or indirectly, as related to the Bailey Project? Or as a result of the incremental infrastructure pressures that will ultimately be placed on the town from this project? If so, what were those? Thank you.
Cindy Marshall, 45, Post Hill Road. Joe, Russ, Doug, how could you do this to our town? How can you support this project that is going to change this town forever? Your town, our town, my town. I'm really, really disappointed. Thank you.
I'm curious about what would possibly be some of the industrial restrictions placed upon the property? About road restrictions placed upon the property? What their exit plan would be, if they go forward to protect our community? The last car place, the car place went out of town, let me set the wind sound behind it. So what's your exit strategy? Do you go under or may just decide to leave? And then also, where do they have a car needs a plan? If so, what is it?
Jason DeGare from Penn State District Department 5. I have two questions to ask. The owners, officers, and directors of Carvana have been accused of, in some cases, charged and found guilty of some, last actions suited to unfair competition, targeting some private borrowers, borrowing them, and further in debt, repossessing cars. Debt collection and harassment, consumer loan fraud, deceptive advertising, unfair trade practices. They've been found guilty of bank fraud, failing to report felony convictions to the SEC, abusive shareholder profit practices and insider trading. These are just some of the allegations. In our bylaws, character is a very frequent criterion. Character has many meanings, including physical as well as moral qualities. The bylaws can be read to mean both of those. My questions are, did the select board do any due diligence and research in the character profitability and recognition of this company upon learning that it was Carvana? If so, does this mean that the select board condones these characteristics when they vote to endorse the project or the planning board? And are Southwick officials actively seeking additional less than stellar businesses to come in to be reasonably comparable or compatible in character to this company? And my next question, as you know, on Saturday, June 26th, the peaceful rally in opposition with Carvana took place in front of the town hall with well over 150 citizens present at any one time. We were also braced for the northbound and southbound drive-by Carvana corporate car with its full colors during our rally. As they drove through, they were observed by the citizens taking video and gesturing with money made from about the interior of the car. This was a very blunt message from a less than stellar company who has a record of harassing behavior and intimidation, letting us know in no uncertain terms that they are in our town and that we are wasting our money trying to prevent this. This behavior is in complete disregard for the citizens of this town that they were invading. If this is how they will treat the citizens that they want to welcome them, what arm twisting will we face in the future once they are here? There are numerous articles evidence in how poorly disregarded the communities are where these, where they have these processing facilities and how they're negative, or how negatively impacted they are forevermore. I would respectfully like to call on each selectman to state their reaction to the imposition on the intimidating actions taken by Carvana on Saturday, and in light of these actions to state if they are indeed in favor of this project in recent spite. Thank you.
305, Ellen Tyke. So I am interested to learn if this facility will have its own security. Are there any of the jobs that are slated for this site as a security guard? If so, how many and will they be 24/7? And I'm also curious if this facility will have its own cafeteria, or kitchen? And if so, what is the capacity of the cafeteria? How many jobs will be related to cafeteria services? If no cafeteria will be on site, will food trucks be allowed on site? And also, will this site have shower and locker facilities for the car hauler drivers similar to truck stops? And if so, how many jobs will be related to janitorial services for the showering facilities and other similar cleaning, not related to shopping? And I also want to say that what I feel that the select board has forgotten is, as much as the people in this room and everybody else in this town is a part of this town, this town is also a part of us. So anything that you change in this town's public, you change within us as well. Thank you.
Anyone else from the office? Now, I guess we're going to figure out this on our Zoom.
Sue Brosk.
So you're not going to still speak for her?
Yep, we should be able to hear him when they speak.
I sue.
She's just got to unmute herself.
Yeah, I'm unmuted. One thing, I'm disappointed in our select board. That's it.
Thank you. James Wong. James Wong.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. Southwick is at a critical point right now, and this is something that was brought on because we didn't know what was going on. So this critical point in the next few weeks is going to determine the future of Southwick. If Carvana gets in and changes the face of Southwick to be an industrial car lot, that opens the door for all other industrial companies that may want to come in here. The precedent will have been set. Those of us who live in Southwick chose to live here because of its agricultural community, because of its outdoor activities, because it's a small New England town. So to allow Carvana to come in and change the face and the future of Southwick is just a terrible thing that we have to face, and we should not allow Carvana in there because if Carvana does come in, it will no longer be Southwick. It will be the biggest industrial park in western Massachusetts. Thank you.
We're just looking to see if there's anyone else on Zoom. That's it. Amy, there's an, I can't read it. It's Amy Adowski says she can't hear very well over the Zoom. Apologize for that. And if, her question is, I live on 71 Tannery Road. Traffic is already horrible on our street. I've had numerous accidents in front of my house. To me, Carvana and the number of additional cars and trucks that'll be going down our street will make it much worse. There are so many people walking down our street and riding bikes to go to the bike path. This sounds very dangerous. That's what she wrote.
Thank you.
There's someone that has their hand up, and I, they don't have a name, though. It just says LG Stylofor.
It's Nancy Braska, 12 Hillside Road.
Go ahead, Nancy.
First of all, I do want to also say how disappointed I am with our select board. I'd also like to know why this was under the Bailey Project, and the residents in Southwick were not informed, and it was so secretive. Thank you.
Great, that concludes public comment. We're going to move on. Thank you for coming. Next up is our actual 11:06. Which will be, let's do the payable, let's do the payable payrolls first. Now, special payroll warrant, 2131B dated 6/22/21, and the amount of $1,523.
One of the wire, we'll get it for you. One second.
It's the room is backwards. The abusives are fine. Yep. Okay, so we're doing the payables, payroll in minutes. Acknowledgement, special payable warrant, 2131B dated 6/22/21, and the amount of $1,523. That's a new record for wealth. Acknowledged payroll, payroll warrant, 2128 dated 6/22/21, and the amount of, that's about $258,543.22. Let's see, minutes, open session dated 6/14/21.
Just chairman, I will make the motion. Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox.
Doug Moplin.
Okay, and next up is executive session minutes dated 6/14/21. I need a motion for those.
Chairman Russ Fox will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox.
Doug Moplin.
Okay, so 6:15, Attorney Frank Caruso regarding Gravy Joe's liquor license transfer to Ken's Lakeside Plaza LLC.
Come on up, chairman. I'm going to read this first. The motion's open. Chairman Russ Fox will open the hearing.
Second.
Okay. So. Joe DDI.
Russ Fox.
Doug Moplin.
All right. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Laws that Ken's Lakeside Plaza LLC has applied for a transfer of the non-premises alcohol license at Skidery Inc., DBA Gravy Joe's at 141 Congdon Road, Southwick, Mass. Previously owned by Skidery Inc. Managing record is Justin Scott Waterman. Property description, building consists of first floor, five rooms, cellar is one room with a bar, extending the boundary of area of 600 feet, 600 square feet in the back, which includes three decks and one terrace. Alterations of the premise to increase serving area from 10,427 square feet to 11,714 square feet in the former boat house. The proposed hearing will establish a transfer of said license from Skidery Inc. to Ken's Lakeside Plaza LLC. Approve new manager, Kenneth E.
Egleston.
Egleston. Thank you. Establish entertainment license, establish and maintain same serving hours as previous license. Time and date of hearing is June 28th, 2021, at 6:15, the select board's conference room slash auditorium, located at 454 College Highway, Southwick, Massachusetts, by the Select Board Acting as the License Commission. Please note the governor's termination of the CP19 emergency order regarding meetings and the new laws to be adopted by the Mass, the district, and June will provide guidance for remote meetings going forward. All right. So that's it.
If I have to make one correction, I believe it was determined that it will not actually be an expansion of the service area, that that was previously licensed. Is that correct, Robin? Then we determined it was previously licensed?
The boat house was already licensed. Okay.
So it's not an expansion.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, thank you. I know the select board is well aware of the history of the location. Joe's been trying for some time to sell it. Mr. Egleston, sole owner of the LLC, he's also going to be the manager of the business. He intends to run it similar to the way it was run as far as the hours, what he's serving. He previously had some experience, not on his resume, because he's, he's worked, he has his own, owns his own company for over 20 years. But he ran another restaurant, Alexander's Restaurant, in Hills. So he does have experience. He did get recertified with tips. I can give a copy of that to support also. Again, he does have experience in the business. He was recertified. He has told me that everyone who serves will be certified within a couple weeks of being hired. He was going to be a hands-on manager. He actually lives in walking distance to the location. He's five houses down on Knott Road. He purchased the building, the business, and the license, so he's going to own everything. I've explained to him, he understands as manager that he is responsible for everything that happens on premises, even if he's not there at the time, and he understands that. And he's anxious to start working on the building, get it back, back up and running again.
All right, thank you. Okay, read any paperwork to be entered into the record. I don't have anything here.
Just the tips or tips.
Of course, but I have nothing from police and fire. All right, so let's start off. Ask anyone to speak in favor of the transfer of the license. Does anyone here like to speak in favor of it?
Can I get your name and address again? I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Cindy.
Is anyone here to speak against it? There you go. All right, so general discussion by us. What do you, what's the real game plan there? I mean, is there a marina going to go in? We're running at the profits in town now. I'm going to come right out and say it.
Yes, if I can speak to that.
Please. Please speak to the parking we discussed earlier.
Mrs. Skidery did apply for a license. He went through the entire process, but he never filed one. So right now, there is no marina license. So Mr. Egleston has had to hire engineers to redo all of the work on marinas, including the parking. Once he gets all that put together, we can then go to the state and get the approval. But the engineering work he's having done includes the marina and the parking, and it'll all be part of the package, that's it. What I think Mrs. Skidery didn't realize is, you have to file with the, with the registry in order for it to be a proper license. He never did that. So even though he actually filled out the entire application, and he actually even did the engineering, he never filed it. So as far as the state's concerned, it never happened. So we have to start from scratch, and it's going to take some time, and some, it's very expensive too, as Mr. Egleston can tell you, to get the engineering done right so that we can present the parking and the marina and everything to the board.
Okay, and judging by your occupancy of 150 people, judging by your parking lot, right? We can all close our eyes and vision your parking lot, envision 150 people. Please tell me where I'm going to envision a marina. And I'm not here, I'm just getting this on the open now because the shit's going to hit the fan later. So I'd rather discuss it now.
Before it can be, the engineering has to be done first.
Understood.
As far as the math goes, I can't do math, which is why I have to.
That's where you became an attorney.
Yeah, so, but I will tell you that when the plan is brought to you, it'll be, it'll be done properly.
Okay, but does it have to come to us for the marina? Seriously?
For the marina?
Yeah, I mean, once the state approves it, that's what I'm running into now in town in either ways.
Yeah, once approved by the state, we then have to have the town here.
Okay.
There's a procedure with the planning board.
Understood.
That has to go through process.
Yeah.
And I'm, we're all on the same page, yet we're running it through now with other marinas in town that aren't, and there's no parking, and.
I was unaware of that.
Oh, I'm not. Probably any time we're discussing. So I know, and that's not why we're here. I get that. You're here for the liquor license transfer.
Right.
But I just want that in the open, so when you come back later and shit hits the wall, we're going to smile and go, remember that discussion about parking?
I do, and I, and I understand that there are marinas on the lake that have similar concerns that have their licenses.
They're not, I don't think they have a concern. They already have their license, and they think they're fine. But we're hitting walls now with.
I'm saying the parking.
Yeah, the parking issues everywhere, you know, and then the lake is popular, and I guess there was 100 pound two boats parked on our beautiful North Pond over the weekend, which is normal, I guess, but it's like, there's only so much room.
Yeah, that was not happening before the ownership of the property took place.
Well, it's all good. I'm sure they're great people, and a lot of them live on the lake. It's not like they're all coming in. They have so many spots or boats, and you, you know, slips, right? Trailers? Trailers. So a lot of that is just the folks.
You wanted to open that? No.
All right, so Mr. Fox.
Yeah, I, I think it's great. Yeah. Anytime we have a business reopening, you know, in these, under these economic times that we're living in, and, but I do want to emphasize to you, and your councilor knows what I'm going to be saying, we take liquor licenses very seriously, very seriously. So if, if you're going to be in that kind of business, don't break any rules. That's all, that's all I'll say.
Hey, the five years that he owned Alvin Janers, there was never ever this. Excellent.
I'll just echo what Mr. Fox said, you know, we, we've had others in front of us in the past with transgressions around, around that, and it's something we do take very serious. Obviously, we love to have new businesses open in town, especially reutilizing a distinct facility that's already standing, would be great. And, you know, to what Joe said, you know, with the, with potential other uses, just do your math, right? It is, like you said, it is just math, right, for parking and everything else, and what you can fit into that parcel, and what you can do. And, you know, you know, the planning board has a process, they have a bylaw, and they have rules with which to work under, just like any other proposed proposal that comes in front of them. Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to close here.
Russ Fox will make the motion to close this here.
Was there anyone on Zoom that had anything about this?
I'm sorry.
I don't think so. So then I'll second the motion.
Motion was made seconded. Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moplin, aye.
So now any motion to grant the transfer of the license.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Moplin will second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moplin, aye.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you. Congratulations.
What's that? I read it once, we fixed what we thought was wrong, and I think we're fine.
Great, thank you.
Good luck, you have a lot of work ahead of you.
Lot of renovations, Senator.
Sure. Thank you, thank you.
Next up is a joint appointment of treasurer, collector, clerk by select board assessor. Chairman of the finance committee chair, select.
Stan Follis?
Yeah.
Come on. And Al Hoyt.
Al Hoyt.
Michelle, would you like this up here? No, she's all set where she's at.
Are you guys listening? All right, what do we need for this?
The special act just calls for a, the vote by the board, the three board of select person members, the chairman, the board of assessors, and the chairperson of the finance committees act to jointly appoint the individual who holds the combined positions. So as you took care of all the appointed officials and department heads in the last several weeks, this is another one you have to do, but it involves other people from other boards assisting you with that vote.
Mr. Chairman, Russ Fox would make the motion to appoint Sheldon.
Second.
Linda Baffel, second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moplin, aye.
Linda Baffel, aye.
Al Hoyt, aye. Thank you. That is very nice. Chair of the finance committee, the board, PCC, CDVG, Leeches of Wings, for seven wing average, 21, 90, two for 15. Is that all set?
Yeah, you just need to vote on it.
Mr. Chairman, Russ Fox will make the motion to authorize the chair to sign this.
Doug Moplin, second.
Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moplin, aye.
Sorry about that. It's so much easier on Zoom. It is. All right, adopt revised job description for COA director. You guys looked at it? Are you happy with it?
It's just, it's more nice to reflect changes in employee.
Okay, that's it?
Yep, it's approved by Labor Council, the department head.
I need a motion, George.
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve the new job description through council and agent department executive director.
Doug Moplin will second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moplin, aye.
All right, next up will be the Rotary Club is looking for a one-day liquor license for the concert series. And it looks like it's going to be since the 14th, 24th. And it looks like it's going to be since the fourteenth, the twenty-first, the twenty-eighth of July, and then August fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As the town itself is a corporate member of Rotary, I believe you need to invoke the rule of necessity.
Oh, I'm on Rotary.
The board of selectmen are corporate members of the Rotary, so we need to invoke the rule of necessity in order to take said vote.
And how do we do that?
Make the motion to invoke that rule.
Make a motion.
Russ Fox would make the motion to invoke the rule of necessity.
Doug Moblin will second that motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
Thank you. All right, so back to the concert series. I gave you the dates. It looks like it's at six P M. till nine P M. It's going to be at Wauwun Park. The refreshments provided. Yeah, I see the dates already. So. Oh, yeah. All right, so I need a motion to approve.
Russ Fox would make the motion to approve the Rotary's scheduled concert series for one day.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
Are we waiving the officer? Are we passing that deal? How's that work? Anything said about the officer, Carl?
No, it was not under request, but it's been historically done.
In the past.
Yeah, in the previous summer concert series, there has never been one replied
Right.
by the department. But then again, the, that's up to the police prerogative when they review it.
Okay, then. Accept resignation of the supervisor.
Russ Fox would make that motion to accept that resignation.
Doug Moblin, second.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
Regional dispatch with Westfield Executive I M A Agreement. And you guys read this? Are we comfortable?
Yeah, you've already read it.
Motion to approve.
Russ Fox would make the motion to approve.
Doug Moblin will second.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
Okay, authorize chairperson to sign N O U with P V P C for regional energy planning assistance through mass D O B R funding.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Moblin will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
F Y twenty-two D P W goods, services, materials, and project bids. No surprises.
Mr. Chairman, is the D P W director in one line?
He's on vacation. He's on vacation.
I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve based on the D P W director's recommendation.
Doug Moblin will second that motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
Hey, Joe, I, I am listening in. If you wanted to ask any questions.
How's the vacation?
So far, so good.
Enjoy yourself.
That's the downside, right?
Yeah.
Get you anywhere.
Yeah.
Anything in there that I should have been worried about before I said yes to it?
No, I, I think the letter was pretty straightforward. A lot of the same names we've seen in the past. A couple of new vendors, but we did our due diligence and looked into them and we're confident that they'll work out for us. I think, I think overall, if you're looking at pricing comparable to last year, the pricing is very similar, if not maybe a little bit lower than last year's bid prices in general, on average.
Yeah. All right, thank you, man.
Yep.
All right, submission of annual social media policy for long. Carl, what is this about?
All boards are just being reminded of this by, along with the open meeting law
Yeah.
and other types of policies. So this is something that the select board members are also going to need to review and sign off and submit to our office so that all of them can be compiled.
Okay, how long before we have to get it back to you?
It would be advisable to do it within the next five to seven days.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have to submit one if you're designated to another board or commission or just?
I think if you.
Committee.
If you've signed it once, you, you want to stand.
Good enough, right?
Right, because there are people on redundant boards.
Correct.
Authorize the assignment of proceeds for fifteen Gillette Avenue.
Yeah, that came in last week after, this is a mighty violated planning commission. And the person has satisfied everything they need to do under the program terms and requirements.
Yeah.
So it has to be signed off by the town so there can be a discharge of lien on their real estate title.
So a motion to approve.
Yep, you're going to authorize the chairperson to do that.
Russ Fox will make the motion to authorize the chairman to sign.
Doug Moblin will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
Prove water sewer baiting request for five fifteen College Highway.
Right, this was already approved by the water commission. So now the select board has to approve it in its capacity as the sewer.
Need a session?
Yeah, Russ Fox would make that motion to approve the abatement.
Doug Moblin will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
Approved contract amendment with Tanya Bond for College Highway Water Mine Project. This is there.
Yep.
Randy?
Yes, I'm here. So this is a, a contract for engineering services for Tanya Bond. This is, at the last town meeting, the town meeting approved some funds to complete the waterline improvements. It started a couple of years ago. This last piece would be to replace the transmission main that runs from our new pump station on Jerry Drive to the Springfield Warren Street connection. So this would be to rehash the design that was already done and put it out to bid and provide all the engineering services that are required for that work. And the water commissioners, the water commissioners are voted on to award this contract at the last meeting last week.
And this is the piece when say G G speaks to, to the town, to the new pump station?
Yeah, that's correct.
Which we didn't have funding for two years ago and we can now have money, basically?
That, that is correct. Yep.
Thank you. Need a motion.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Moblin will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
Okay, approved chair assigned P V P C N O U for Town Hall roof projects, R F P services. And Carl, you said that was coming from leftover monies?
Yeah, it's coming from monies within it, the P V P C, just like they helped us do the Tanya Bond review of all the other municipal buildings a number of years ago.
Yep, okay, so.
So this is coming from those funds, right?
All right, thank you. Need a motion.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Chairman.
Doug Moblin will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
All right, so that's all on that agenda. Next up is new business. I have F Y twenty-two road and infrastructure project with D P W. So probably just want to come up with a date when we can all get together.
Do a side visit.
And we'll do a site called God's Site. It's going to get expensive. Okay, so Randy, would you get back in town? We'll figure out a date that works for you.
That'd be great, yes. Yep, you have my, there's, there's some lists of, of projects on my list, and I'm sure you have your own list, so we can get our, get our, I'll put our, get our list together and figure out what we want to do.
That's great. The only complaint I ever get lately now is that road to the dock for the transfer station. That seems to be the biggest, I don't know why, they shouldn't be going fast with their trash, but that's, that seems to be the biggest one I give complaints for. So Carl, we'll look at some dates when Randy gets back.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, under old business, the select board is requesting a joint meeting with D O T regarding the construction of the bridge in Westfield.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. May I have a new business?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I don't give any business.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one request. I'd like to make a motion that the board of selectmen are the gift count purchase a Purple Heart flag. We are a Purple Heart community, and August seventh, twenty twenty-one is National Purple Heart Day. So I'd like to make that request. Where are you going to hold it? I would suggest hanging it at the town hall.
Mr. Moblin?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblin, aye.
Any other new business?
No, sir.
Mr. Moblin?
No, sir.
Carl, you're good for it.
No, sir.
Now we can go to old business. The select board requesting a joint meeting with D O T regarding the construction of the bridge in Westfield. Did we get a date for that meeting?
Uh, yes, the, the senator has been able to facilitate a date.
Right.
Sometime in July.
Wonderful.
So. That is just a, a visit with Mastio teeth officials.
Eventually it will be. This, and this is just my version of it, so you can pick me apart online later or right ahead. Basically, for a few years, we've been screaming at them for that bridge, because all the traffic is going down by the Sunnyside, as you watch Sunnyside is caving in. We spent forty thousand, fifty thousand two years ago to catch one side, caving in again. So originally, we went screaming at them for monies to kind of, maybe they were paid to do that road over. We've gotten nowhere. It looks like they cleared out over there. If you guys drive by, you see that, so it's been cleared. I did talk to someone in town who's selling law. Apparently, their company got that job, and it's a, they're telling me it's a four or five-year project.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, right? So it's not going to be done tomorrow. So I think our, but Mr. Fox has a problem with D O T quite a bit. So we usually send him, and nothing gets really resolved. There's a lot of arguing. So we are going to send Mr. Fox again. And that's just what it is. We just kind of stay in their face and say, hey, we're still here in Southwood. Yes, we have a road issue. Yes, they finally let the fire trucks and the ambulances, I believe, go over them now. And that was their biggest problem at first because they don't allow you that. So as you know, we gotta get the noble every once in a while.
Mr. D. To, to that point, our ambulance did get an exception to go over that bridge, but Westfield cannot bring their ladder south with Cowell's Bridge. So Southwood Fire is covering the, the south end of Westfield as a first responder for that until that bridge is completed. But that, we, we had a previous meeting with Mass Highway and Mass D O T two years ago, two plus years ago, it was pre-COVID, pre-COVID with them to try to expedite that project. I mean, the state's just horrible with bridges. You can see the one at Little River now. They've got barricades up there, so that's, you know, going to be on the radar soon. But last I spoke with the Ward Three representative, he told me that they're still on track for a twenty twenty-five opening for the Cowell Bridge.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, next up, road may change Southwood Road to Iron Horse Hill.
Yeah, town council is going to be working with Chief Landis on that to finalize the details for that hearing.
Okay, so there's still new arrangements.
Right.
Green energy program and town fuel suspension vehicle policy.
Right, we're waiting, we're waiting from P V P C some information to finalize that policy. We did get the information needed from some of the municipal departments, but we're just waiting for one more to submit its info to the agency.
So, so waiting for information on it.
Yeah, and then that'll come to you at some point. And again, that's a requirement under that green energy designation program that we're entered into.
Yes, it is. But it's all good. Tiger houses, I guess. All right, opening on historical commission, there's a vacancy. So anybody in Row Three looking to step up? Is that you? No, okay, just checking out. I, I, I think you can send an email to town in Southwood if you guys are seriously interested. And I think we have some other world openings to announce.
Ag, E D C, you name them. What other boards we got openings on? Cultural Council.
The planning board's going to need people to be.
We have a master plan committee starting. That was funded in the town meeting in May. We'll publish a list for you. We'd love to have you.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
Excellent. And then we have next up the Russ Fox Memorial Medical Building vacancy. How are we making out of that?
Mr. Chairman, they have not gotten back to me yet. We just talked over the phone. I'm going to follow it up with another phone call and see if there's any interest with another, working with another. Another. Pass that.
Thank you. And then we have the school board committee vacancy.
That's been posted, correct?
That's been, well, it's, yeah, they were looking at the, sometime the end of July or. So they're going to be, they're soliciting the candidates, and then you're going to have a joint meeting to do interviews.
So let me ask you, is the opening still open for that?
Yes, it's still open.
So school can be another spot.
Yeah, that's already posted, so.
Thank you for stepping up, Chris. Appreciate it.
One oh two Morton Viney Road.
Right, Joe, I believe you, you've marked that up for a hearing on July twelfth, so it's going to be scheduled.
July twelfth. Wonderful, that'll be a wonderful. All right, appointments for town boards and committees. We want to look at that again tonight? We want to wait?
Mr. Chairman, I think that Mr. Moblin said we're going to be publishing a list, and we'll have a good crowd here tonight, maybe get some interest going, and maybe the news media will help us try to promote it. You know, there's a ton of openings. We'd like to get more people involved.
All right, anything else for old business vacancy?
No, sir.
Anything else for old business?
No, sir. Oh, wait, we got one. Just a nomination to cut. Amber Bach is saying that Cassandra Bach of Ten Pine Hill would like to fill the historic committee vacancy. Cassandra, could you have her send an email to, who she sent it to? To Robin, to Robin at Town Hall?
Along with anyone else.
And anyone else.
So my understanding is that's it for tonight? I don't see anything. Is there executive session?
No, there's, no, we're still waiting for something, so we can't.
So that's going to conclude the committee's meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
Russ Fox would make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Moblin will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, Joe D.D., aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And Doug Moblin, aye. Thank you.
Good night, folks. Thanks for coming on.